Welcome everyone. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of North Plains regular session, city council meeting for Monday, February 5th, we'll be having a meeting at seven o'clock. Would you all please stand? Lori, roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Lindham.
Yeah.
Council Page.
Here.
Council Kendall.
Here.
Council Martinez.
Here.
Council Paken. You're muted. I can't hear you, but I see you. Council Sheldon.
Present.
And Council Schmidt.
Here.
Thank you, Lori. Item six is our consent agenda, and I'm going to take six C and put that, remove that from the consent agenda because we have a gentleman here from search and rescue who will, he called up shortly and give just a brief explanation of the program, introduce himself to all of us. So I'm removing six C from the regular consent agenda. Other items on the agenda would be then our regular city council regular session agenda for the evenings, and also the January 16th city council minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes that we need to be aware? All right, carrying none. Do I have any motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, for a second.
There.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you. All right, item number seven is our public comment. This is the time that we ask anyone in the in the audience or online if they would like to speak about something on the agenda. But this time, is there anyone in the hall that would like to do that? I don't see anyone online. And Lori, if you received anything, be it email. Nothing prior to the meeting, tonight's meeting. All right, great. Before we, well, yeah, before we swear in, our new police chief Nick Jones, I'm going to ask Erin from Washington County Search and Rescue to come up, if you would. Erin, if you just state your name and address for the record, it can be your business address, but just if you would give us a few, you know, give us some highlights, a brief highlight of who you are, what you do, and what the kids in the program are active.
My name is Erin Coogan.
Oh. I don't even know.
Okay, perfect. Address of 215 Southwest Adams Avenue, calls for a word, 97123. Keep going? Oh, there you go. Thank you. So I am the lead search and rescue coordinator for Washington County. Currently, we run about forty-five youth. They run from the age of fourteen. They stay in the program until September, sorry, March, or twenty, for the first year. And we get them for a lot of time. The program's been together over fifty years. I think we're pushing about fifty-six years right now. Last year, the kids gave over fifteen thousand volunteer hours. Their primary function is search and rescue in Washington County. We do both missing people and evidence searches, so say, a major crime happens here in county and the detectives leading it help finding evidence, our kids will go out and help with that. In their time, they found guns, knives, bullets, murder weapons, all sorts of things. Excuse me. Also, again, missing people, we had a hundred and four documented missions last year. Not all of those are actual deployments, but so pretty busy team. What I'm requesting from the council is a waiver of the rental fee or just made here for yearly banquet. We've been here the last two years using just to get for our banquet. What our banquet is, is it's a a thank you banquet for the kids. For all the time they give us, we do a meal of some sort. We get prizes from the community, raffle them off to the kids. It's just a time where they can bring their family and we can show the kids and their family how much we appreciate them. That's my request today from the council.
I know years ago when my husband was with Washington County, he led the, he was, I guess, a lead for the, for the S.A.R.
Oh.
And I remember an experience that we had, we went to the training site where the kids were, and I don't recall this, where that was. Is it the same place?
Depending on how long it goes, I don't.
Ten years ago?
Yeah. No, we're in a new facility.
Okay. It was pretty, it was pretty impressive. There were a lot of kids, young women and young men involved, and just the, the training that they went through, and you know, you could just see the, the impact that being a part of this organization had on them. They stood really tall, and they seemed very confident, and it was really a neat program, and it still is. I mean, not just a neat program, but a very valuable program for, for the kids, so.
The kids have given me just as much as, you know, our team has given them, so I mean, I've built some relationships, the kids that are current law enforcement officers, because they've grown up and now they're doing the same job, you know, we are.
Mm-hmm.
Which is amazing.
Do you ever have any, do you have a waitlist for kids that want to be involved in the program, or?
I don't want to say a waitlist, but we do get sporadic, because our application process is actually active right now, so it's January to April. And throughout the year, we do get just sporadic applications outside of our cycle, people wanting to join.
Oh, nice.
So we, we go for twenty to twenty-five new youth a year. This helps with our attrition rate. And then the academy for the council, it's on our, our academy is twelve days long. The kids are with us twenty-four seven. We, from the moment they wake up to the moment they go to bed, they're either eating or learning or working on a skill set. And an average teen uses, takes about six months to get to state certified level, and we do it in twelve days.
All right. Any counselors have any questions before we address the question?
Just one. So how does this group of people, um, normally, they?
How do they join it, or like find out about it? So a lot of word of mouth, because our kids are in, most of them are in high school when they join, so word of mouth happens a lot. Family members, we do use social media through the sheriff's office to push out, like, hey, join search and rescue. We're trying to build that stuff. Not, not great, like, I'm not great at social media and advertising and recruitment, trying to work with our teams on that to build that, but I would say probably sixty to eighty percent is word of mouth.
Any recommendations? Comment? All right, so we have resolution number twenty-two fifty-four in front of us, requesting the fee waiver. Andy, do you have a, any comment or presentation regarding the waiver? Request?
Mayor, I, I do not. This is something that this particular incident with this partner that we've supported before that we can absorb, but in the Jesse Mays Fund, just because the county has been a good partner, especially since we have been under contract with the law enforcement agency. So I can recommend that we do that, and it supports potentially more officers in the future for North Plains. I look at it that way, as a future investment.
What, what's going to the council?
Working, counting parts of so many ways that are part of their funding, though. This is something that we would benefit from, and it's good for our new, I am in favor of this. And I'm glad that York Place is the host. I'd like to make a resolution. I'd like to make a motion for approving resolution fifty-five four, promptly waiving rental fees for the use of Jesse Mays for Washington County Search and Rescue annual rate.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. So it passes. Thank you very much for your leadership and for leading these young men and women through a pretty amazing program. So have a, have a great night that night.
Thank you, council, so much. This does not go unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is swearing in a police chief, Nick Jones, and I, I see you have your family with you, and you were kind enough and introduced them to me in the, in the parking lot, and so we'll get to that in just a minute. Are you doing this swearing in, Lori? Great.
Do you, would you like to?
Yeah.
It's up to you. Your voice. I have a copy for him so he can read along, and I have a copy for him to keep as well.
All right.
That will both sign.
Okay.
So.
All right, we did practice this, so. Be you. All right, so the oath of office for the chief of police, Department. There's a right here. I'm Nicholas Jones.
Bye, Nicholas Jones.
On the sixteenth day of January twenty-twenty-four, do solemnly swear.
On the sixteenth day, January twenty-twenty-four, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And the ordinances of the city of North Plains.
And the ordinances of the city of North Plains.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of chief of police.
Faithfully perform the duties of chief of police.
For the city of North Plains during my continuance therein, so help me God.
For the city of North Plains during my continuance therein, so help me God.
All right, so subscribe, you've sworn to me before me on this fifth day of February twenty-two thousand twenty-four.
Man.
So, Jones, maybe your family members send a picture to you. Could you send that to me? And I'd like, they have good angles from there, and like, receipt. Okay, thanks.
And so I, I do know that you, some of your family members actually have ties here in North Plains, correct?
That's true.
Um, would you like to take a moment and introduce your family to us?
Sure. This is my son, Owen, my wife Angela, and then behind me is my sister, my mother, and a dear friend.
Well, we're really excited. Welcome tonight, and we're really excited to see him be a part of our team here in North Plains, and we certainly, you know, want to lift him up and support him as best as we can, and I'm sure you are feeling the same for him, so we're really grateful that, that he chose to come here and, and to be a leader for our community, so you should be very proud of him. Yeah. Um, you know, Ms. Chief Haxton, I guess, do I still call you Chief Haxton, or what do we call you now? Jim? Um, you know, I'm glad you're here, and I just didn't know if you had a few words that you wanted to share with Nick, the family, us, you, did you want to say anything?
Well, you kind of put me on the spot. I feel like I have to. Really, it's been, I told you before, it's been an honor to be able to work in North Plains and be the chief, and it's been fantastic. And I'm super excited for Nick to be able to have that same opportunity. And Nick's a stud. He'll, he'll do a great job, and he'll be really good for North Plains. He's welcome. It's gonna be great. I'm, I'm excited for the next few years for you folks.
Well, you know, we're grateful for your leadership and, you know, for you coming on board and being here for the first couple of years of this relationship with the county and, and setting the tone, right? And really providing a great opportunity in our community for community policing, right? You know, I see you in the morning on my way to work, and I, I slow it down, right? But no, and but, 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 you know, you've been here, you're here, and you know you're always welcome. I know you all, you'll be here, you'll come to the events and that sort of thing, but we certainly appreciate your leadership as well. Thank you. Any words from council? Council Paken?
Well, you also, also put me on the spot. Chief Haxton or Deputy Haxton, I just want to say again, thank you so much for your service to the community, and I hope to see you in passing, but not for any other reason than you're not pulling me over, is my real hope. And Chief Jones, welcome aboard. I know I've interacted with you at an arms length when I would see you in Cornelius, and excited to see more, more interaction in the future, and the best is yet to come. So welcome aboard.
Council Page, I know I interrupted you, if you want to, and then Council Schmidt.
So I just want to say, welcome to North Plains, and this person of North Plains, that you age, that you're official chief, so now you're police official. That's, that's the real deal. And I want to say, uh, I'm coming back on.
Um, there's a theme here, huh? Maybe we're lip flits. Council Schmidt.
Yes, I remember the police chief today. I'm surprised that wasn't the only one that's met with him yet, so I would definitely encourage everybody to set up their appointment to meet with him, so he doesn't understand what we're dealing with and what targets we want to have. I think he'd be happy to see. I'm excited for you.
Anyone else? All right, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right. Next up on our agenda is the presentation for the design for the new downtown welcome sign. I hope you all had an opportunity to, to see the email that Lori sent out, and I know that Norman is taking the lead on this, and she, and they will give us a presentation this evening on the down and outside. She's, they're looking for feedback. Rowan, I'll turn this over to you.
Uh, thank you, council. Good evening. I want to start while Ann pulls up her slideshow here with a big thank you for the warm welcome that I've gotten over the past five and a half months here in North Plains. As you know, the RARE program for this year for eleven months, and it lies by. But as I go into my second half of my service, I'm feeling more energized than ever, and I'm so happy with the response I've gotten from the community and the opportunity I have to put a little bit of my effort into making this place shine a little brighter. With that said, I've been working on this project for the past few months, slowly inching along, and where this really came from was a sense that the current downtown welcome sign, that black and white sign that you see at the corner of Glencoe and Marshall Street, is not representative of North Plains as a community. And we thought that we could do better. And so tonight, I'll walk you through sort of the state of that current sign and what we've come up for a sign structure, as well as proposal for the sign design, the, the visual that you'll see on the face of that sign, and an approximate timeline for how this project will lay out. So this is our current downtown welcome sign, or city center sign. I want to point out a couple of things about this. This is a sturdy sign. It's the maximum allowed sign for a commercial sign. Now, of course, this isn't a business sign. This is a right-of-way city sign, and as you know, the planning commission has been working on updating our sign code, which will bring in right-of-way signs to be official in our code. But I want you to know that we are going to be keeping the dimensions to be in line with the current standards and the future standards. A little bit about the state of the sign, the border around it is peeling, and we see some yellowing of the letters, some mineral deposits from weathering. All of these things that just detract a little bit from the overall condition of the sign, and it's very simple. It, it's legible, which is a great feature of a sign, but it is a little more simple, maybe than I think North Plains is, is character reflects on North Plains. Andy, slide. So that leads me to our inspiration for what I thought going forward North Plains should look like. It should look like the things that we've already decided on, and those design elements that we see throughout town. Two of those things that I've noticed since I first got here were the banner structure over Glencoe Road, those steel spires, and the pedestrian bridge over McKay Creek, which is a big investment, and the design there, it's very nice. I'd love to pull those elements together to create a really cohesive aesthetic going forward. A part of our downtown improvement plan was to create that downtown aesthetic to carry a consistent theme throughout town. So in light of that, going forward with sort of this steel, these wooden elements calling back to our agricultural and rail history. Andy, if you would like. And I gave that information of those design elements, that history to Impact Sign Company, who we have the city had worked with before, and they came up with this beautiful design for the sign structure. Now, I will note the sign face that you see here is just a filler. This is not our proposed sign face. But this sign structure is the same size as the current one, but with some, obviously, some drastically different aesthetic choices. On either side, it will be supported by four pressure-treated timber posts that will be stained to match the colors seen in the banner spires and the pedestrian bridge. The cross rails there will be powder-coated aluminum in a rust finish, which will look somewhat like the Corton Steel of the spires for the banner structure, but will be less maintenance and not pose a risk of running rust onto the sign face, but it's a more durable surface. And this is currently in fabrication and moving forward with Impact Sign. This is the part that I'm so excited for you guys to see and get your feedback on. I am working with Allison McClay, who is the mural artist who's responsible for all of our beautiful downtown murals, and she has put together this preliminary design for the sign base. And this has been really just a blending of past and future North Plains. Calling back, of course, to our rail history, our forest products that support this town, and then our downtown being a gathering spot, a mix of new buildings and old buildings, and of course, that beautiful sunset scene. We are the city to the sunset. At this point, I'm going to let you guys look at this and welcome any suggestions, any feedback, any comments that you have, anything you'd like to see change or would like to see stay.
Okay, that, where do you want to go? Is this the, uh, gun show?
Sorry?
Where is the sign we, we, we placed there?
This, this would be at the corner of Glencoe and Commercial?
Okay, I see that was the small side of this downtown, and so this is, okay. Yeah, thanks. When's the finish?
Council Kendall, I'm sorry, and then Council Smith.
Yeah, I like the train heading downtown. I mean, it's, it's not going out of town, it's coming into town, so I like that concept. Looks very good. And I like the history because that is what North Plains is, so you hit it. I'm done. Great.
Thank you.
Number one, I never did like that other side. And number two, I found to the thanks to the state of the city and the mayor, deputy mayor, for biggest highlight for basically both years is their new sign, local sign. So I, I think that's where we need to be, and this is probably the not-to-everycome-up, so it doesn't say much, yes. But yes, we need to do something to.
Paken, I want to make sure to, oh yeah, your hand is turning.
Thank you. I just want to say I love, love, love the cohesiveness and pulling in all the design elements from other parts in town. And I wouldn't add or change anything to this current signage, but maybe just a suggestion in this preliminary design of the typography, and maybe if we could align that close to the font that's in the City of North Plains letterhead would just be one suggestion, just to, to further tie in that cohesive feel. But overall, great job, and I love it.
Thank you.
One comment I have, I, I love it. I really, it's great, and I, I like that you heard the train, you know, so that it's actually going downtown, which is great. Around the buildings, it's a little dark, and so I'm just wondering if there's a way to lighten it up, to highlight, to, to bring those buildings out.
Absolutely.
Lighten the green behind it, the trees, or something like that? But just to be able to provide that, that dimension. Anyone else?
I like the, I like the diversity of the color, the way it is, that we make it like the city logo. You know what that is? That's a, that's business more, the more businesslike or on our letterheads and stuff, and I'm not sure if that would I think I would leave it the way we hear it, it might, might be.
Yeah, this is more fun.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's dynamic. It's downtown. You can't miss.
So yeah, it's, many, many, it's right, the, the true dark kind of dark background. Those things.
That, I will, I will say that this screen doesn't do it justice. The color's a little, it's a little washed out there, a little darker in some areas. It's kind of better on this screen, so the, the projector and the lighting doesn't do it just. Did, did you mail it out earlier?
I did.
Okay. It, it does look a little better on a screen, and hopefully in real life when we get there, but yeah, it's definitely washed out in the sunset area, a little bit more on this, on this version.
Well, probably is, it's good age outside as well, so having a good contrast would help with that.
I'm hearing a lot of, let's bring downtown forward, let's brighten that up and make that a focal point. I think that's a a good, a good direction. I can give that to Allison, and I'm sure she'll work her magic, as she always does. Andy, I feel we'll go to the next slide. So this is just a little bit of what to expect going forward. I'll be bringing the feedback to Allison, and we'll get a sort of final rendering. And I hope to bring that next council meeting, but we'll have that done, and you guys can put your seal of approval on it. At that point, we can get painting, and hopefully Allison voted around a month to six weeks for a full painting. I'm hoping April or May, we will be able to get that sign installed, get a ribbon around it, and cut, cut that ribbon and bring in a new era of things. So, yeah, if you guys have any follow-up questions now, you can ask me, or if anything comes up in the future, shoot me an email, call me. I'm always here to, to answer questions.
A quick question about durability. How often will this be touched up?
Sorry?
Question about durability is how often will this idea be refreshed?
This should be pretty durable. All of Allison's paintings come UV sealed. They should last several years without any fading. If any fading does occur, she should be able to come out and reseal the work before damage occurs. But she expects all of these to last just as long as a mural would, which is saying at least ten years. But she expects all of these to last just as long as a mural would, um, which is saying at least ten years.
Um, have you thought about lighting? Um, have you thought about lighting? Lighting for the sign?
Oh, lighting, yes. Um, we've been working with Public Works on uh the current lighting situation is obviously um, just some solar spotlights. Uh, as we look at the site further um towards installation, we will look at maybe hardwiring in some lighting. Um, but we'll be going with a similar concept, which is uh loaded ground lighting shining up at the sign. That should work pretty well for a mural-based sign because we won't have any cast off of um three-dimensional letters or anything. Um, we shouldn't have a need for any drastic lighting solutions. It should be a pretty simple task. As we get closer, we'll firm up those ideas.
Okay, great. Alright.
Mayor, if I may, this is part of a, this is part of Rowan's uh project and taking some elements of the downtown plan. That corner this summer will have a little bit even more gussing up and transformation. Been waiting for the sidewalk to be installed around the corner of Glenco. Subcom's gonna start work on that later this month. Once that's done, definitely in time for the Garlic Festival, we'll have new plantings there, probably get some, maybe look at some basalt rock columns, you know, kind of some things that'll be low maintenance, but native grasses, rock formations will look good. Um, as well as probably some new um plantings um as well, so this sign will be kind of the, the nice little first element of that. Once the sidewalks are in, we'll finish out the corner there.
Uh, go ahead.
With your, you're planning there. I know Patty left, you're planning nine hundred vaults, you remember? So I think the problem is if we don't have a watering system.
Yeah, we do.
Where it's gonna have plants die on us during summer.
Yeah, there's irrigation there.
Oh, there is?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Um, the, this is a, a side note, um, not pertaining to the sign um per se, but the spires. When those spires were installed, there was lighting on the inside of those spires. And I don't know if that's something, um, could you look into that? Uh, have Public Works look into that or something?
Absolutely.
There used to be lighting and I don't know what kind of lighting it was, but I'm sure that you could find out.
That's definitely a question to be raised.
Yep. But great job and it's pretty exciting. Looks really, really nice.
Oh, thank you. It's uh, it's been a pleasure to work on and get to to know the community as part of this, uh, as well as my other projects and then to watch it all come, come together has been a, an absolute pleasure, so thank you, Council.
Yeah, thank you. Alright. Um, we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is um a public hearing ordinance. Uh, we're doing a second reading and adoption of actually ordinance number four ninety-three amending the terms of duration of the city business license. Um. I have a question. The, the memo says first reading, my agenda said second reading. And so, do we have clarification? Is that a?
Mayor, this would be the second reading, first reading took place in January. Apologize for not updating that.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring that to your attention earlier. Sorry about that. Okay, um. Anyone have any questions about this um ordinance? Alright. Um, so this is for the second reading. Uh, there's a recommendation for motion in your packet.
I'm going to approve the second reading, the ordinance for my three, the municipal. Modify the term duration of the North Plains business license.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a first and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Um, any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carry.
Okay.
Ordinance number four ninety-three is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of North Plains, Oregon. Amending municipal code to modify terms of door duration of the city business license. Um. Do we have to have an adoption after this? Yeah, also.
I'll move to adopt ordinance.
Alright, we have a first and a second to adopt ordinance four ninety-three. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carry. Thank you. Um, unfinished business discussion is the business license application fee discussion. Um. Bill or Andy? Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm back with you. Um, so yeah, the memorandum that's in the, your agenda packet is really sort of in response to question or questions about um, our business license application fee and um whether or not it's a good idea to have it and how much it is. So I'm in the interviewing time, I basically just um, just about every city in Washington County, I pulled together their business license fee structure, as well as whether or not with that structure, they have a business license application fee. Um, and so I just present all of that information kind of side by side, so that you all can kind of have a comparison context for how North Plains stacks up and how other cities are approaching this. And the main thing, you know, I'm I'm sure you have opportunity to read the memo, um, just to kind of help guide your discussion or inform it, or or maybe bring some questions to you, but um, most cities don't have a business license application fee like North Plains. But nearly all the cities that don't have a business license application fee have higher fees than we do. Um, whether it's flat fee and or higher per employee uh components of the fee. Um, Tiger and banks are sort of the, the far outliers on both sides of that. Um, but if you factor in all the costs of a business license fee to a business each year, we're kind of in the middle reasonably, you know, pretty competitive and most similar to our, our neighbors in Cornelius and Forest Grove, those are the two um, that we're most similar to with our fee, so. Um. It it's kind of a matter of of balancing out um that application fee in there. And given that our per employee component uh to our fee um is on the lower end of things compared to other cities, the application fee is more common um, like ours, so, you know, I don't think there's a perfect um or best way to go. It really kind of boils down to how uh you all want to approach the fee in businesses and the community.
Okay.
If you start a business in North Plain, looks to be the second most expensive option we have as far as the season over here. Um, motions do not last more than a year. So starting a business is the most expensive when you're in North Plains due to this application fee of eighty dollars. Now, I have to see that more for picking up sometimes.
Thank you, Counselor.
What are some of the other possibilities on this? I think that um, knowing that the staff actually has to spend some time um, meeting with the businesses and making sure that they're compliant. Um, there's some staff time involved that I think that is important to, to, to to make sure that we are capturing some of the staff time that it takes to do that sort of thing. Um. And I would also think that, um, I mean, there's a, there's a cost for doing business, like all the other cities have a flat fee, so that's flat fee. That's a reoccurring flat fee?
That's correct, Mayor. Um, for the other cities with the flat fee, it is, it's the same. Well, it's, yes, everybody pays that flat fee plus.
Yeah.
Mayor, I think we need the uh, you know, the, the application fee to show we know who got in town and who's in it and who's not. I mean, that, we know you're there, but uh, it's good to have that continuity to show their face and grumble if the fee is too high or too low and, and we know they're, they're there. I don't want to be a mute here. What are you, are you proposing what's in the yellow? Is that what I'm hearing or seeing? Or what? Is that Bill?
Because the, in, in yellow, orange highlighted, that's what.
What is now?
That's what council adopted in um, in June for July one.
Oh.
I mean, I think it's pretty good, like, like Mayor Lahan said, I mean, that's about the period of time and that, you know, those people out of time and effort, because I'm going into business, I I'm planning appropriately for, you know, fees for part of the business, so I mean, I think being right there in the middle or, you know, second from top, isn't, isn't it to hear someone from? Not necessarily learning the business.
Any other comments or suggestions on this? So this, again, was adopted for July one, twenty twenty-four.
The business license was adopted, but now they're thinking to attend to talk about it for the problem. Yeah, I think it was, and it's separated, you know, so I haven't read it last time. So it wasn't adopted, it just happened there. I like to go back to the law.
Well, it's, listen, it's, it's in the current code.
Right.
So it stands, and I think it's reasonable, and I don't think there's a reason to make a change. I think part of what we have to do administratively, uh, it, this is not a deal breaker for a business. I just don't see that. Uh, we're not talking hundreds of dollars, we're talking a few bucks. And I think it's reasonable to, to continue with the fee structure as it is for the application.
I'm completely fine with the way that the fee structure is listed as well. Um, I don't see it as a, a huge barrier. Um, in, in fact, I haven't heard that we've had any uh, new businesses say that there was a barrier to these, to these fees unless there's something new coming down the pipe, but, okay. But this is, this, this is definitely a discussion item.
Okay.
Yeah, no action, yeah, just a discussion item.
Since the, every year when they renew, is the, you know, per employee fee that was then changed, you know, if I five in one year and then they get ten the next or whatnot, it goes with the week.
Counselor Martin, that's correct. Um, every year when they renew, they have to fill out how many employees they have uh for that next twelve months. And so the fee would change, would I kind of auto calculate and change for them? Um, but um, as Lo- as, as Lori just mentioned, the application fee is only paid when you're new, and then renewal, that's not a factor anymore.
Another guess, I would just say, um, since it was a discussion item, if there's anything in the future um, that we need to know from, you know, folks coming in, I'm sure you'll bring this to our attention. Okay, alright. Thank you. Alright, um, next item, we have city manager report. And then council business calendars. Andy, your reports are very thorough and detailed, and I certainly appreciate that. Um, I, one question I have for you was, I know that I have not done a doodle poll for the spring. Um, so I'm, where are we at with that, with our retreat?
Mayor, that, that's on my list here. Um, where we are is, uh, we're at a stalemate. So um, I did just want to go over a few items, though, that aren't in this report. Um. One of those is um, Tom Holt, our sort of government affairs person lobbyist, for lack of another term. He's going to be giving some testimony tomorrow to the House Economic Development and Small Business Committee on behalf of North Plains. They have a piece of legislation that is renewing a state program that essentially identifies um, key strategic industrial land opportunities across the state and um, I guess essentially registers them as, as um be significant uh areas for, for the state and they're registered with Business Org, and that's not a, it's a program that expired this past year, so they're going to, uh, the legislation is to re-up it and then also capitalize it with some funds and that would help get um, lands ready too. So, so Tom's gonna do that testimony on behalf of North Plains. Um, I reached out recently to the gentleman Jordan Gutierrez, who the mayor has met. He's running for House District thirty-one um, for that seat, just so he can learn a bit more about North Plains. So hopefully we'll get together in the next couple of weeks. Bill and I had a meeting today with the Washington County Democrats. They wanted to learn more about North Plains and the urban ghost boundary um, uh, issue that's on the ballot, so they're, they're talking to different folks, so we, we kind of explained some issues to them today. And then if you look, um, I guess more nuts and bolts, if you look in the city council meeting calendar, uh, I don't know what, what page that is, page forty-four. Kind of listing out, you know, some of the topics, looking ahead, a few meetings. On the bottom that I called something, I put something down there, just kind of outlined, and I'm calling an issue or a- action tracker. So when council members have issues, and I'm, I'm not actually, I want, let me rephrase that. I don't mean just council members. I mean, when the council has an issue that collectively as a body, they want me to make sure that I'm following up on, or if you feel like it's not being addressed, uh, I, I promise I put this together before any sort of evaluation things came through. Um, that's, that way we can all stay on top of things. I've seen this, I've talked to other city managers about, how do you do this? And this is something that um, uh, one of my mentors use with, with good effect. But he stressed to me, and I, and I totally agree, it's not just somebody's pet project, is, the council as a whole says. Tell us where, what's happening with this, and that way we can just make sure it's not falling off and um, we'll make sure it's assigned to the staff that needs to follow up with that. So just a note there. Um, this is certainly a good time to let me know what those issues are, or, you know, any, any future meeting, but my only rule is that the council as a whole agrees that it's something that, that belongs and it's not, you know, someone's neighbor complaint or anything like that, so.
Yeah.
But they rise to, the rise to full council.
Yeah. And I, I think some time to time, there's, um, we have this unfinished business item on our agenda and sometimes, you know, for for months it goes like there's nothing under that heading, and I think to myself, there's gotta be some, there's, I know there's a lot in the pipe. Right? And um, I, I like that there is um a way that you're going to track that, that we can circle back around with you and, and be aware of what's happening.
Yeah, and, and sometimes these aren't even, not, not even really council business items, they're just, you know, little bugaboos that, that you all have, and then I, and I, I know that they're documented, so we're not, we're not finishing those, or not, not forgetting those, so. And, okay. I think three or four folks did fill out the doodle poll. There was certainly no consensus amongst, consensus amongst those who did. Um, at this point, I'm thinking, you know, May, March, uh, Easter weekend proved and spring break proved to be a little bit of a roadblock. I'm thinking if there's a weekend in April, maybe that's what we target in on. And I know Counselor Fage, Saturdays are out for you, is that correct?
I can, I can make Saturday, I just have a week off, and this is scheduling. And I do have a vacation time. I have lots of money, uh, my, uh, in my year, so I do have time.
Okay.
So April sixth. Um, uh, Counselor Payton, I couldn't remember, are you, do you work on Saturdays or Sundays, or like, I, what's your weekend like?
Yeah, I typically work on Saturdays, however, I can always, always um, use a vacation day, so no problem there.
I'm gone.
You know, I, I know it's a, it's, it's challenging to find time to do this, but this is extremely important. Um, you know, we've, we've done council retreats, um, and, and I know it's difficult to find just the right sweet spot, but let's really work together and try to find a good day to make this happen. We need to do that. Good for us, good for staff, um, and it's just good for the team, so. Um, doodle poll is still out there, Andy? Yes?
Everybody is here. If, I mean, if, if the calendars are out, then we can do it tonight, that's.
Uh, do we, do I do March night? Saturday? Since I have time on Saturday.
That, that.
The only one I have in the doodle poll I can do is April fourteenth. Well, I think my house of the doodle poll I can do is April fourteenth. I literally have stuff on my other Saturday already.
April fourteen is Sunday.
Yeah. April fourteen. Smith, are you in town?
Yeah, Council Fage.
I my intel counter three because I have nothing. I don't like this day. I don't know if I like that.
She's welcome.
I'm welcome to join us.
Oh, yeah.
All right, um, Monday looks good. Uh, councillor Kendall and then councillor Sheldon.
Okay, what case?
Eighteen fourteenth into Sunday.
Sunday. I'll make it work.
Just call her, just FaceTime her.
No pressure.
Okay, all right. Well, we're gonna go with that pending I guess right now.
And we're gonna just plan on a whole day, eight, six hours? Andy, seven hours, six hours?
Six hour minimum. We'll refine some things with our uh facilitator. Someone we haven't used before that was, he he comes highly recommended. He was pretty excited to work with us. So
Great.
I hope he's available in the fourth.
If he's available.
This all I'll find out tomorrow. He said he he can do it Sunday.
That's okay. Wow, thanks for your, you know, your
We'll find someone though. He can do it. We'll find someone. Important thing is everyone else agrees.
Yeah. Like her and Jack.
All right. All right, we got a date. It's all right, it will be determined. Six hours, seven hours, or six hour minimum.
Okay.
Okay.
What will feed you?
I'm sorry?
Will feed you.
Will feed you. Food and salt. All right, thanks everyone for doing that. I appreciate that. Awesome. All right, anything else that um you want to share? Uh, Andy, you're writing your report?
Oh, no, I don't think so.
No.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Andy about this? All right, um, council reports. Elder Smith.
Move up a standard and last one in Bay, you know. Building went up. Proud of it. In a small city. We're more well represented than in the other cities, Washington County. Anything I've ever taught you. It's something to be proud of. You care that much and show up and have a good, good group of us. I think all commissioners were there. Did talk to say your name wrong. Mista?
Five.
Fire?
Yeah. Five. Great. Good job. And that was for the 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 new uh Center for Addiction um building at the um old WACA building. So I know Council Payton and I were there. Andy was there as well. Um, it was a uh they're they're transforming that into kind of a one-stop shop. This is um for addiction and yeah.
Anyway, I I thought my nickname was take back those kind of crowd of our group are showing up and uh it's a good way to let the county commissioners know that we're interested. And then maybe they'll get what they will be served results and being able to talk to the county commissioner. The other thing uh talked about a month ago, they go over to Burn Hill and walk around. And the ones that were cut down and short fencing, they didn't talk to one that had a fence like that. He said he got an email. Um, they were gonna fix the fencing the next month or two. So kind of happy that they're not cutting it down and kind of butchered. Trying to meet our goals. Might have to run follow through.
Anyone else?
Yeah, one of the good additions, guys, I might, I I set up good with. I forgot to count it, then I ended up counting. And um, that gets way out of hand if I don't count, if I don't schedule off of time. So I felt bad because my wife goes to the uh Rocky County uh County Justice, and there'd been the same thing, it was a dead long corn building. And anything like that, I'd like to uh attend because my guilt for it. So um, I feel a little missed that I didn't go, so that's what I mean, I wanted to schedule that.
I I don't, you know, we could look into um, you know, having a seeing if there's an opportunity for you to to take it forward. Um, I know your wife is very involved in here with us.
Yeah.
And so maybe there's a a way we can connect something like that. It's very asked.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other um council reports? Um, I attended the funeral, uh the memorial service for Gary Shararda Shararda. Um, he was mayor of Durham. And um there were probably a hundred and fifty people at the Mac um uh Athletic Club. Lots of love, lots of information. Uh, you know, he actually was the longest-serving mayor in Washington County, twenty, over twenty-seven years.
Whoa.
Um, so his wife of uh forty-five years was there. He was hoping to get to fifty. Um, but uh he had been battling cancer. Um, and uh he was a trooper, but Gary was such a um he was a gentleman and very uh kind. He would always like, um, he would be that voice in the room that was just very calming. And even if, you know, there were people butting heads, he was the one who would just like bring the tone down and really just uh he epitomized just being very thoughtful. Um, he uh you know, in in Durham, uh he ran for for mayor several times, but um and no one ever ran against him, right? Um, because I guess they just loved him so much and he did such a great job. But he was very instrumental and very vocal about, you know, transportation needs um in in Washington County and beyond. But good guy, uh very sorry to see him go, but um he definitely was very well respected and loved amongst the other mayors and and other people in the community. So um that was really nice, nice to be a part of. Um, I uh today actually met up with the Friends of the Library, Suzanne Brown, and um I had a client. So her husband was a rote to sweeter. And um she had a lot of books to donate to the Friends of Library. And so we get over there, I called her ahead of time and said, okay, how many boxes do you expect? And she said, I have sixty boxes of books already boxed up, right? And so Susan put as many as she could in her rig. And um I hooked the two of them together, so she's gonna go over and get more boxes because she just couldn't, you know, couldn't have them. And then she comes out and she says, well, all these other shelves, there were five bookshelves in the house full of books and a lot of them hardbound books. And she says they're all yours too. So the Friends of the Library got a major, major donation today from this gal. And um so there Susan, Susan's eyes were bugged out. She was so excited, but she also shared with um Judy that you know, this is coming back into the community because the Friends of the Library, I guess, provided about thirty percent of their um, you know, budget to the friends, to the library. And so hopefully this wonderful, amazing donation will really bump up the summer um book sale at the Garlic Festival. Um, and and then, you know, um they'll be rewarded with extra funds for our library. So that was, that was a really, that was a really cool connection today. So it was pretty fun. Her books, I can't imagine. Where's mine? Um, all right, well, uh, that's it for me. I know we have um councillor Sheldon, you're on board for February's meetings?
Oh, yeah, I said that for the
So you've got the whole whole lot. So, all right, thank you for doing that. So, all right. Any other comments or reports? All right. Item fourteen is our executive session. So we're gonna go into executive session, and I know uh Lori will have a script to read. And during executive session, though, um, we are going to have to ask everyone in Jesse Mays to leave for the evening, but I keep staying, sticking around and being here. Um, so Lori, before I go into that, I know you have something to read. Thank you, ma'am. The city council will now meet in executive session under ORS one nine-two dot six zero parentheses two parentheses I to review and evaluate the employment-related performance of the chief executive officer who does not request an open hearing. Only news media representatives and staff designated by the city council are permitted to attend the executive sessions. News media representatives, staff, and council members are respectfully directed not to report on any of the discussions that occurred during the sessions except to state the general subject as previously announced. The council will return to a regular session. If there is a need for action on the executive session item, no final action or decision may be taken in executive system session. And materials distributed will be collected by the city recorder at the Thank you, Lori. All right, so at this time, uh I will adjourn the county. At this time, I'm gonna go into the second discussion and
Yeah.